Okay, then I'm going to, at 6:30, I'm going to start the meeting. I will call to order the meeting of the Hingham Select Board on August 3, 2021. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone recording this meeting? Other than Harbor Media? I see no one, and I will note for the record that members of the Select Board participating this evening are Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey, and myself, Joe Fisher. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of July 27, 2021. I am prepared. Liz and Bill, are you?
I am.
I am.
So I'll accept a motion for approval.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes set in July 27, 2021.
Second.
Been moved in second. How do you vote, Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. They are approved. Next item on the agenda is to consider a motion to authorize the Chair to sign a lease agreement with Santander Bank NA for the lease of 21, 2022 ICCE 77 passenger school buses and 1, 2022 ICCE 77 passenger school bus with wheelchair accessibility. And I understand that we have with us John Ferris from the School Department who can perhaps walk us through what the documents are.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. So the documents are, it's a lease agreement with Santander on behalf of DATCO, which is the company we purchased the buses off of. We purchased them through the Sourcewell Cooperative Bidding Contract, which is an authorized government agency that is acceptable for the state of Massachusetts procurement laws. And what it was is a five-year walk-off lease. And if we could just step back to town meeting back in May, just to, so that you know, in town meeting, we took a vote to allow the School Department to enter in a five-year lease, because typically we can only enter into a three-year lease. That vote was passed by the town, so they did authorize the five-year lease. Prior to that, back in March, we've been dealing with DATCO since probably the end of last year, 2020 December, you know, to get this new contract in place, because the previous lease from 2016 is actually expiring, or actually has expired, as of the end of July 31. And so we were in negotiations with them to kind of, not negotiations, but procurement, so we could replace the 22 buses that we had previously. So with that, the School Committee took a vote, I think it was maybe late February or early March, to the extent that they authorized this purchase of these 21 buses, 22 buses, to replace the existing fleet. And so I entered into a letter, I gave DATCO a letter saying, "This is all contingent upon the town voting and us receiving an appropriation for our budget." So all that took place previously. So we do have actually 21 buses in our possession right now, because it's, you know, you can just imagine if you're going to deliver 21 buses, you can't do it overnight, so it actually takes time. And they came and they picked up some buses and they dropped off the new buses. We have issued a payment to DATCO in the amount of $255,600, which is the first payment out of the FY '22 budget, where we did have an appropriation. We don't put all this money upfront, so instead it enters into a finance agreement with Santander whereby we'll make an additional four payments over the next several, four years from our appropriation of a similar amount. And at the end of these five years, we walk away from the lease. So basically DATCO comes, picks up the lease, the final payment, balloon payment, is paid by the vendor, the DATCO, when they pick up the buses. And we will enter into a new lease, or, you know, go into a lease for some new buses, five years hence. We do have the option of purchasing at some point if we so desire, net purchases based on the residual value of what is projected in this lease agreement right now. So, and the reason why I bring it to the Board of Selectment is because in some sense it represents an operating lease for the most part. I mean, people treat it as operating lease, but it is sort of a finance document and the schools can't enter into debt. So that's why it really sits before you. And I'd be happy to answer additional questions if I haven't given you the picture of it.
So, John, thank you, and thank you for being here. I know the School Committee is also meeting, and we do appreciate your time and your work on this. I do have a couple of questions, then I'll turn it over to my colleagues. First, I know you're referring, when you talk about town meeting, it was Article 24, which authorizes, let me just find that, which is, authorizes the School Department to enter into the lease. And I guess this is a question, perhaps, Tom, for you. The next time these come up, do we need to have the language at town meeting to not only also authorize the School Department, but also the Select Board? Since it looks like it's the Select Board that will be entering into the lease with Santander Bank, although the town vote is for the School Committee to do this, for the School Department.
I believe that's an MSBA, is it MSBA requirement, John? Not the MSBA, it's a school-based requirement.
Right, okay, so I mean, that's not, I'm not going to let that hold us up here, but to the extent that the authorization is specific to the School Department as opposed to the town, I just want to make sure we're acting consistent with town meeting.
Yeah, it's coming from an appropriation, Joe, so I'm not sure, you know, it is an appropriation that we would get on a yearly basis, and I think that's understood by the vendor, so not sure that's necessary.
Yeah, just you're the chief executive officer. While they may vote it, vote to authorize the School Committee, you're just the chief executive officer. I see what you're saying, I'll talk to John about that.
Just as a matter of form.
Yep.
And, John, as I understand it, the reason why we are leasing, instead of making an outright purchase where the purchase is financed, is that there is a residual value associated with the school buses and our lease, or you can view it as a purchase, but it's being amortized over the full amount minus the residual value. So our payments are actually less than they would have been if we were making an outright purchase. Did I get that right?
Yeah, no, that's correct, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the residual value, is the amount that we would have to pay if we determined we wanted to purchase the bus at the end. But, you know, the maintenance, five years, it's a good turnover point for maintenance, because during that period of time, we're only responsible for, you know, we've got to leave a certain level of brakes on there and certain level of tread on the tire, it can't be damaged, and they can, you know, and they take them away. So later on, after five years, is when you start getting more maintenance problems. So, and when we first entered into this, this was, you know, it saved about a million dollars over five years, the first one. So, hey, it turned out to be very prudent for the town and the schools, and allowed us more flexibility in our transportation, you know, arrangement, and certainly paid off last year with COVID, since we had total control of our equipment.
I thought I heard you here that the last payment in the fifth year would be going to DATCO, and I believe the documents say the payment in the first year is going to them.
I paid, DATCO was the first payment, the last payment to Santander, but the balloon payment at the end, when you look at that term sheet, that balloon payment is paid by DATCO.
Oh, I got it.
You know, so that settles the whole thing. And it's funny, we just closed one out with Wells Fargo, so the way that actually works is Wells Fargo gives an invoice to DATCO for that balloon payment, and, you know, and that's how it gets settled.
I was, I'm not totally familiar with the documents, but the Santander document, I couldn't find where it said that we actually are making the first payment to DATCO, even though that sort of the cover letter at the beginning of the packet indicates that. It looked as if all of the payments were going to Santander Bank under the lease purchase agreement.
I couldn't agree more with you, Joe, yes, I couldn't, I couldn't find it either, but I did call Santander and I said, "Okay, how does this work?" And they said, "Well, you can send it to us," and then we'd send it to them, or you could send it directly to them.
Okay.
So, I know, I mean, I was a little uneasy that it's not all in writing, but it's, I guess it's just the way those paperwork works.
Okay. And when you and I discussed this, I asked about the energy efficiency of the buses that the town is moving towards, if not net zero, certainly consideration of the impact on the environment of all of our purchases, including school buses. And I believe you are now on the path that, as you look at future transportation options for the schools, that you will be factoring in energy efficiency issues, environmental issues, when you select buses. Is that a fair summary of where you are?
Yeah, I would agree, that's definitely a fair statement, because prior to COVID, we were looking into trying to get a grant so we could actually trial one of these electric buses and see how it works, of course, you know, and that was really just before it hit. We thought we might be able to get another bus onboard, electric, and see how it actually worked. So, I mean, it's been in our thinking, and, you know, we certainly, I think we still want to try that, we still want to, you know, see what type of more efficient modes are out there. So, you know, we'll be, once we get back into school and, you know, get ourselves sort of in a regular setting, you know, it's certainly an area that we want to pursue, because we think that it would be good. And, you know, you like to trial things before you say, "Hey, I'm going to enter into a five-year contract for a full fleet." And they are significantly more expensive, so the grant is very, very important right now. So, for example, you could get a bus for $80,000, an electric bus might cost $180,000. But if we had a grant, the grant that we had learned about, it was working such that they were going to subsidize it so that the School Department that take this grant would just pay what they would normally pay for a diesel bus, and they'd be able to trial it. So hopeful that, you know, I mean, it's not going to happen now, because nothing's coming down now. I mean, you know, you can't get anything for the most part, but hopefully that opportunity like that will present itself again, you know, in the short future, short-term future. And we can, in fact, jump on it and grab another piece of equipment and start testing it and seeing how it works.
The only thing I would add, John, if, when you do that, make sure you coordinate with us so that we can get, make sure we have a charging station in place before we probably buy an electric bus, if we're not going to get very far with it, if we don't get a charging station.
Right. I would have to check to see if it plugged in, I don't know yet. Maybe they provide that too, but, yeah, no, that's a good point, Tom, but wait. We would say that, well, how are we going to charge it? I think that question would come up.
I would like to think so.
Mike Patrick, who does a great job at the dispatch, he would say, "How are we going to charge this thing, John?" It's like, oh, good thought, okay, let's find out.
No, Tom, my suggestion, because I did discuss that with John, is we need really long extension cords. No, but seriously, you know, this is, this is on, you know, top of mind, and I just want to make sure that it is being addressed. Liz, comments or questions?
Just one additional question, John. On one of the memos, it's the revised quote from DATCO, there's a reference to, there might be additional taxes depending on kind of the Biden administration. Were there any additional fees that we weren't originally planning for?
None, none in this agreement, no. The buses came in exactly at the price quoted.
Okay, great, thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, thanks, John, for coming tonight. So I had a lot of questions about the electric buses, and I'm glad to hear you're exploring that, so thanks for doing that. That sounds like we're on the right path there. So I know we're leasing 21 buses. Last spring, didn't we lease 15 buses, like maybe March, April? I was looking back over our old agendas, I'm like, well, I thought we approved a lease of a significant amount, and I remember at the time, Joe was asking about rotating the years of it. So is this 21 in addition to the 15 we approved last spring?
No, so, you know, Bill, it happens to me too, but I mean, that conversation could have been 55 years ago.
Oh, no, it was in the spring, it was like, it was March or April.
What we did at the beginning of this year of 21, we leased five older buses from DATCO so that we could enhance our fleet for COVID. So those were short-term leases that we took, I believe, for seven months, or six or seven months, so that we could just, you know, provide the extra level of transportation we needed for, you know, the reduced quantities you could have on buses for hitting Foster North, for being able to transport my people around. So all of those buses were returned at the end of this year, and that money was actually put through, you know, the CARES Act. The other thing, but we have, so we did the 22 buses 16 years ago, but then, since then, we've also leased, you know, two additional buses for taking over the MEKO runs from Boston. One of those was as a three-year, so it kind of like completed this year, so we rolled that into the overall fleet. And another one was sort of a five-year lease that we took out two years later, so that one's actually going to expire in two years. But this wheelchair bus that we've put in this one is actually taking the place of that MEKO one, two years hence. We just had a need for it right now, so that's an extra bus that we're actually purchasing, and we believe we'll save it through the maintenance costs, you know, for the $15,000 a year. So it's $30,000, we can provide $30,000 over two years, we can provide the student in need, you know, with transportation for their whole, the whole Hingham Public Schools career. And then two years down the road, we don't have to refinance anything. So we'll just take one of the other buses, use that as a MEKO, and use a wheelchair-enabled bus for, you know, that 22nd bus.
Great, thanks, John.
Thank you. Tom or Michelle, did you have any questions on this?
Nope.
Thank you.
Any members of the public with comments or questions? Seeing none, I will accept a motion on the school bus lease.
I will make a motion to authorize the Chair to sign a five-year municipal lease purchase agreement with Santander Bank NA in the form attached hereto for the lease of school buses as authorized by the 2021 Annual Town Meeting warrant Article 24.
Second.
Moved in second, we come to vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher? Aye. It is approved. John, I really appreciate your being here, thank you.
Thank you very much. I guess we'll see you in a few minutes.
See you at 7 o'clock, yes.
Okay, thank you, bye-bye.
Next item on the agenda, I believe, is the COVID-19 update. We are not doing pointness this evening.
That's right. Thank you, Joe. So as you all know, we haven't been doing regular COVID updates because there's been less to report, and as we said we would, when we have stuff to report, we will. So today we do. So as of today, August 3, there have been 27 COVID-19 cases reported in Hingham during the month of July. That is compared to five cases reported in June. So, so far, one new COVID-19 case in Hingham has been confirmed in August. So we are keeping an eye on the troubled uptick, troubling uptick in cases reported at the state and national levels. As of last week, 69% of Hingham residents were fully vaccinated compared to approximately 64% statewide. However, if you look at only vaccine-eligible individuals in town, which are people 12 and over, the percent of fully vaccinated eligible residents rises to 82%. So that's, that's good. But we are keeping an eye on that uptick in cases. So regarding mask guidance, last week, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, which is the agency we've really been following since the beginning of this, I know the CDC comes out with a lot of guidance, that is obviously a national agency, so we tend to follow the more local agency at the state level, the Department of Public Health, and what they do. And they often, often will mirror what CDC does, though perhaps with a slight delay. But so last week, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health issued a new mask advisory in light of the CDC's recent guidance. So fully vaccinated individuals are advised to wear a mask or a face covering when indoors and not in your own home if you have a weakened immune system, if you are at increased risk for severe disease because of your age or an underlying medical condition, or if someone in your household has a weakened immune system and is at risk for severe disease, or is an unvaccinated adult. So all unvaccinated residents are advised to continue to wear masks in indoor settings and when they can't socially distance. Masks are still mandatory for all individuals on public and private transportation systems, in healthcare facilities, and in other settings hosting vulnerable populations such as congregant care settings. And the Hingham Health Department remains in constant contact with the DPH and continues to closely monitor all COVID-19 trends and guidance. That's all, Joe.
Thank you. Tom, what is the mask policy for Town Hall?
So right now, we're asking people that aren't vaccinated to wear a mask, and people who are fully vaccinated are certainly welcome to wear masks, but it's not, it's not required. And we'll, like I said, we will be reassessing that as we, that guidance and its nuance as we, as we move into the coming, you know, week or two.
And I should have, before you began speaking, just welcomed you back. We haven't seen you, I know you were away, and it's really, it's really great to both hear you, see you, and we really appreciate your guidance. Michelle has been superb, and, but your job is still here, Tom.
Glad to hear it.
We really are glad that you're back.
Yeah, no, thank you. I had a great break, it was much needed, and I appreciate the time off that the Board offered me, thank you.
Liz, any questions on the COVID update?
No questions, thanks, Tom.
Yeah, Bill?
Tom, I know you said there's only been one new case in August, but for the, some of the later July cases in town, do we know if those folks had been vaccinated and this is part of, they acquired the virus of the Delta variant?
Michelle, do you know if we have that breakdown?
I don't have that breakdown, but we can check with the Health Department to see if they do.
Okay, great.
Bill, I have personal knowledge, at least one of those who tested positive COVID was fully vaccinated. And my understanding is that it's unfortunately not, the infection rate is not discriminating between vaccinated and unvaccinated, although the severity is clearly much less severe for those who are vaccinated.
And, you know, Michelle, if you could get that information for maybe next week's update, if you choose to do one, it might be good for residents to know that, you know, there is, the risk is still there, whether they're vaccinated or not. I mean, I know it's in, it's out there in the media, people are talking about it, but when it happens to your neighbors and here in Hingham, people, you know, sometimes are more alert to it and more cautious of it. But the high vaccination rate is excellent. It's great to see as a community that a lot of folks have got the vaccine, so that's all I have, thanks.
Any member of the public with questions on the COVID-19 update? Hearing none, I will now open it up to public comment on items not on the agenda. Any, any member of the public have comments on items not on the agenda? Then we'll move on to the Town Administrator Reports. Tom or Michelle?
Sure.
Nothing tonight, just welcome back to Tom, and my reign is over.
It was a reign of terror, right?
But your work is far from over, Michelle.
No, enough, all right, thank you, Joe.
Select Board Member reports. Liz?
Just a couple things, I know we only have a couple of minutes. I did want to just recognize that August 1st was the anniversary of Hingham owning their own, our own water company, so congratulations to everyone that worked so hard to get that done. It's very exciting. The Hingham Downtown Association sidewalk sales for this past weekend, I think they were a big success. I know it was a beautiful weekend, finally, and a lot of people were out in the water, so special thanks to the police and the harbor master for keeping everyone safe. And this Saturday, August 7, is Hingham Farmer's Market Day.
Yes.
And that's it.
So that's not it. People should show up at the farmer's market, there will be a proclamation read, and I know the farmer's market folks really appreciate the support of our residents, so thank you. Bill?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Tom, I do have a question, following up on Liz's report. I have heard two dates, July 31 and August 1, as the anniversary of the Water Company acquisition. Do you know which is the official date?
I believe technically it was July 30, whatever, the end of July.
July 31.
Yeah, but, but we've, we had been, we acknowledged full operational, whatever, transfer at the, at the end of the day on August 1, I believe.
Right, so I think they're both right.
Yes, we signed the documents on the 31st, and everything was formally transferred over on the 1st.
Right, great. I've got nothing else. We will be in a four-minute recess, and then we will reconvene to join the School Committee's meeting at 7 o'clock. And Michelle, do you have the ability to post that link here, so if someone shows up at this link, that they'll be, they know how to get to our 7 o'clock call?
I think I can.
Okay. Then I will declare this meeting in recess to resume at 7 o'clock when we join the School Committee. Thank you.
See y'all over there.
Okay, so I will call the--
This meeting is being recorded.
--the meeting of the Hingham School Committee of August 3, 2021, back to open session at 7:00 PM. I read the Chair comment earlier, but since we're being joined by two new boards, I'll read it again. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You're hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Harbor Media is recording tonight, if anyone else is recording, if you're a panelist, if you could just unmute yourself and let me know, and if you're an attendee, if you could, oh, I see Jenna Mento. Sure, if you could unmute her, thanks.
Yep, it's Jenna with the Hingham Journal.
Hi, Jenna, okay, so Jenna's here. And I don't see anyone else. I would also just like to say that the School Committee tonight, I'm participating remotely as are my colleagues Jim Benham, Ness Corente, Carlos De Silva, Tim Dempsey, and Liza O'Reilly. And Michelle Air is not joining us tonight because she's traveling. So with all that being said, Joe, would you like to call your board to order?
Yes, so I'd like to call the board, the Select Board, out of recess and note that this is a continuation of our meeting that began at 6:30 this evening, and we adopt in full the preliminary reading that Chair Carrie Need did in terms of the state's open meeting law.
Great, thank you, and welcome. Julie, would you like to call your board to order?
Yes, thanks, Carrie. We almost have a firm, but I know that there are a couple other members who are going to join us, so I'd like to call the meeting of the Advisory Committee to order. And I'd like to adopt in all the same language that you just stated, Carrie, about open meeting.
Great, thank you, and welcome to the Advisory Committee, too. So we have one quick item of business to do before we get to the reason we're all here. Liza, would you like to make the motion?
Sure. We have an interim principal at East School starting, Amanda Donovan, who was just announced, and we have salaries to approve, so I make a motion to approve the agreement for August 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. So I make a motion to approve the agreement for August 1st to 2021 to June 30th, 2022, at $139,000 annual salary prorated for the 11-month period that she's working. And an additional $1,000 paid for her attainment of a doctorate degree. And an additional stipend of $2,200 for supervision of the integrated preschool and intensive kindergarten programs housed at East School.
Thank you, Liza. Do you have a second?
I have a second. Thank you, Ness.
Any discussion? I'm all in favor. Moving on quickly, Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Charlotte?
Aye.
James? Liza?
Aye. And I as well. The motion is approved.
Okay, so now we are discussing the Plymouth River Windows Project, which is a vote that we are looking to take. So as you only know, last May, town meeting unanimously passed Article 23, which appropriated funds for the PRS Window Project through the MSBA's Accelerated Repair Program. The MSBA, as part of the process, requires guarantees of the town, there's funding for the project. And what I'm doing is through timing, COVID accounts will be done by the vote of authorized town boards, which is the school made. The language of the Article 23 requires money be appropriated for debt exclusion. However, Hingham doesn't usually use debt exclusion as such a low, relatively low amount of appropriation. It would rather use a different funding source. So what this meeting has to do here is to guarantee that the funds will be available for our project, which we have already allocated. And then it's a bit of work for the whole town meeting that will give the town flexibility and funding source to the project. There's no doubt that there's money and support for the project. We just have to make sure that we can demonstrate that in accordance with the MSBA. I also want to know that as we discussed on our school committee, the actions shouldn't have any impact on our actual school budget. The town has already allocated $900 to this project, which would be more than enough to cover any expenses between now and then. But we're also making sure that we keep the project on track and give the MSBA a guarantee that they're aware. So John, if there are security issues, if there are security issues.
No, Carrie, I think that's, that's fine. I'm sorry, there's a population of $100. There's probably the, the, the idea of the MSBA to require that the local people will authorize, you know, participation for our school budget. So that's what this call is for. We're excited to look at our next town. Of course, that will have to be official, like, on the first. So that's what we're excited to have. So we'll have time to make an appropriate calculation. And to be more substantial, we'll pay for the budget in April.
They may not have still any questions. I'm seeing that. Joe, do you want to discuss with your board?
I know this is not an action I have for the board, but I'm aware that our board members are familiar. And I fully support the comments that you just made. And the select board will follow through in terms of what needs to be done for the upcoming committee in terms of appropriations and so forth.
Appreciate your support.
Julie?
It's all right. I'd just like to confirm that the Advisory Committee, from the inside, to preparation purposes and so we can be up to date on the town budget. And I would say we appreciate the words of the select board and the committee, or our administrative teams, as well. I raise the flag and raise the nation to the session of the MSBA. Thank you. Great. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so Liz will be able to make the motion. It's a lengthy one. All right. Okay, here we go. Whereas the Town of Hingham, 2021 Annual Town Meeting, approved a total appropriation of $62,810,611 to the Town of Hingham Public School Department for this year 2022. And whereas the Town of Hingham's school committee has the authority under Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 34, to determine its expenditures within essential appropriation. And whereas the Massachusetts School Building Authority for MSBA requires confirmation of an available appropriation to cover the costs of the Plymouth River Elementary School Windows Project in order to approve said project for eligible people persons under the MSBA's Accelerated Repair Program. And whereas the Town of Hingham's school committee wishes to confirm the appropriation and availability of sufficient funds to cover the costs for the Plymouth River Elementary School Windows Project. Now, therefore, the Town of Hingham's school committee hereby adopts the following vote. The Town of Hingham's school committee hereby appropriates an amount not to exceed $39,936,000 from its total fiscal year 2022 school department budget for the participating costs of the Windows replacement project at the Plymouth River Elementary School located at 200 Main Street, New Massachusetts, Ochoa, 43. The project will replace necessary courses and windows and make other repairs or replacements as necessary to meet the Massachusetts School Building Authority requirements, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. This proposed repair project would materially extend the use life of the school that preserves an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting required educational programs. And for which the town has applied for grant from the MSBA, set amounts be extended in the direction of the Town of Hingham's school committee in consultation with the 2017 School Building Committee. The Town of Hingham's school committee acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non entitled discretionary program based on the, as determined by the MSBA. And if the MSBA's board directors votes to invite the Town of Hingham to collaborate with the MSBA on this proposed repair project, any project costs the Town of Hingham incurs in excess of any grant may be approved by and received by the MSBA, shall be sole responsibility by the Town of Hingham. Thank you, Liza. Do you have a second? I have a second. Thank you, Ness. We will do a roll call vote again, Jen? Aye. Ness? Aye. Tim? Aye. Liza? Aye. And I as well. I hope we're steering out the highest rates.
Thanks. And you already said, so we might be too late, but I noticed in the line that you read, you said that the expenditure was to be obviously by the school committee, consultation with the school committee, by the school building committee. So as I understand that wording, that's the reverse of what the intention was. So is it your intention that the school committee have to improve every single invoice expenditure in connection with the Windows Project?
I don't think, I don't think so. I'm going to speak to that.
I think the intention was to be, to have the language reversed, that the expenditure be extended by the school building committee in consultation with the school committee. Because we're the ones overseeing it, so it's going to tell me articles that's passed. Otherwise, as written, you would have to improve every single invoice. Yeah, that's, that should, I think that, that should be reversed. I just, I haven't seen the article before tonight, so. Because if the, if it's a school building, that should be, uh, for the invoices. I mean, whatever you wanted to, Carrie, but that would mean that you would have to navigate the responsibility. And I don't think that that was the intention.
No, it's not. Okay. Okay, so last question we have. The motion, I use the motion as a question. So I'm not proposing that the, the set amount of $3 million, an amount not to exceed $3,936,000, would be extended in the direction of the 2017 School Building Committee in consultation with the Town of Hingham School Committee. Do you have a second? I have a second. Thank you, Ness. And we will do a roll call vote again. Jen? Aye. Ness? Aye.
Aye.
Liza? And I as well. And Ray, thank you for getting that. Let's see if we have a moment. So, okay. With all that being said, I, I still would like to turn your board to order.
Yes, so I would accept the motion for these select board and motion to adjourn. Hold on. Wait a second.
Aye.
Hold on. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Ramsey? Aye. Fisher is also aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much for turning us to Julie.
Yes, thank you. My motion for the passing of the adjournment.
I, I don't think I should be adjourned at this meeting. Thanks.
Aye. All the way around, we go through the list, obviously.
Aye.
Or Dennis?
Aye.
Nancy Charles? Aye. Dana Anderson?
Aye.
Abigail?
Aye.
Haley Moore? Aye. Kristen Gossi? Andrew Sacks? So I did it. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm pretty anxious with it. That's why our party members are in the interest of other, uh, Aileen from the Ministerial Department, other party members. Aye. Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for turning us to adjourn. I can't help but say that. I think she really wished her adjournments, so. So. I think so. Are you going to go outside, Jen? Aye. Ness? Aye. Carlos?
Aye.
Liza? Aye. And I as well. So the meeting is adjourned at 7:15. Thank you.